Good afternoon. And I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township Alangley Council to order. And the first item is adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Fox moves it. And second by Councillor Qualley. All those in favor. Pose carried. Next item is adoption of the minutes, a regular afternoon meeting of November the 6th, and the special budget, and the special budget, meeting for special budget purposes, November 20th. Councillor Fox moves. Councillor Arneson, seconds. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor. Pose carried. Now require a motion to resolve into special closed meeting for the items on the agenda and on table. A motion, please. Councillor Sparrow, second by Councillor Qualley. Anything to add? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor. Pose carried.
Okay.
For special closed. Meeting of the Township Alangley Council. There are no presentations and no delegations. We'll move to reports to council. The first one is the Climate Change Adaptation Plan, F1. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Fox, second by Councillor Arneson. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question on F1. Carries unanimously. And we move on to F2, and that's Community Emergency Preparedness Grant, or Fund Grant Application. I think that $25,000. Could I have a motion, please, on that one? Councillor... Okay, all these hands are up. Okay, the highest hand was Councillor Sparrow, moves it. Councillor Qualley, seconds it. Any discussion on F2? Seeing none, I'll call a question on F2. Oh. You know, the voting has been, it's still left over from before, but it was unanimous anyway, so I'm going to do that. It's unanimous. But if you just want to change the names? Yeah. Soil Enforcement Options, F3. Yeah, there's a motion there. Recommendation from staff. Councillor Qualley, seconder. Councillor Arneson. Discussion. And Councillor Whitmarsh.
Just a question through your worship to staff. This action asks for council to direct staff to include funding for a regular full-time soil bylaw officer. Is this a new, this is an addition to what we currently do? Do we already have a soil bylaw officer and this would be an additional one? Or is this a new sort of role within the township?
Your worship, we do have one officer now. We augment that with auxiliary, I guess, support. This would effectively be taking new resources and existing resources and replatooning those to add an additional bylaw enforcement officer on this topic. That would have to be included in part of the 2018 budget, and we're just, if this is the direction of council, just about in time to do so.
So just, so just to add to that, like, there's two parts to this. One reaffirms the current practice for addressing the compliance with this. The second one is for the bylaw officer. Is it, would it be difficult for us to maintain our current practice that we're doing if we did not have this full-time soil bylaw officer in addition?
Sufi?
Your worship, it would be very challenging to continue with the, I guess, the projected workload continuing to increase, as well as the complexity and the nature of soil deposits continuing to be more and more complicated. We will, we have, as Mr. Becken referenced, we have relied on auxiliary staff resources in the past, and we'll continue to do our best, but it would be very difficult and challenging to keep up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Yeah, thank you very much, your worship, here. So, a couple of things. Obviously, there's a couple of implications here, and I would really have preferred to deal with this, and we may end up there anyway, to have a, an actual report or a presentation on just the comparators on all the options. I think it's, it's laid out, but the visual would help us. So, my first comment on this is, I think our people have really turned the corner on this. There's been a couple of pieces of correspondence, and I agree with some of the comments, but I disagree with a couple of comments that are having made. I think our staff have really tried to balance their actions with respect to this, and actually, I, I want to compliment them on really addressing with process the issue. I phoned, actually, on Saturday of this week, about a dumping down on my, in my area, and was, and that's the second one in the last three weeks that I phoned on, and staff have been very reactive. In fact, stopped work orders within an hour, an hour and a half, and I mean, I think that that's great. Having said that, I think we need to proceed cautiously in some contexts on this. This is a bit of a change from a kind of reactive to proactive approach to this whole process. There's value in that, but there's also an assumption here that I think we have to be cautious of in the context of, it's really not our job to be actually doing soil enforcement on agricultural land. It's actually the provincial government's job. And actually, what we're doing is financing a provincial government solution to soil dumping on ALR lands. So, the question arises, okay, I'm a taxpayer in the Township Alangley, why do I double pay for this, this particular scenario? Why am I paying my provincial taxes, which are supposed to be providing oversight in the ALR? And yet, I pay my local taxes, and they have to provide oversight in the ALR? Is the provincial government not doing their job? The answer to that question, in my opinion, is absolutely not. They are not doing their job. So it becomes incumbent upon us. So that, that then becomes a, I don't know, probably a bylaw officer, is it probably about $140,000, maybe $160,000 annual fee that we're actually covering for the provincial government? And I don't like doing that, because this sets another further precedent of us covering for the provincial government, when it's really their jurisdiction and obligation. I'm not sure that they're doing this in other areas either. And having two enforcement officers for the province of British Columbia is absolut, I think they've actually, sorry, I think they've gone to four, haven't they, Mr. Sufi? Is there four now? Four enforcement officers for the province of BZ?
I'm not sure if they have actually four.
I know it used to be two, and I thought they had increased it.
Not sure, sorry.
But, okay. But obviously, there's a lot of question, because there's been no hoopla about it, but anyway. So, now, let's just say they have two for the province, we're going to provide them with one more for our jurisdiction. And if, if other jurisdictions of a municipal nature provide them with another one, then they've just, you know, one more, and they've doubled their complement across the province, thanks to Township Alangley taxpayers, thanks to City of Abbotsford, whoever else is in there. So I really think that, I concur that we, we need to continue to be diligent on this file. I concur that our staff have, have gone out of their way and are doing an excellent job in terms of rewriting the bylaws, which we've asked for them to do over the last several years. But I just don't like doing the provincial government's work. I don't like doing their quote-unquote "dirty" work, and that's what this is. And it's unfortunate that we have to, as taxpayers in the Township Alangley, assume that responsibility, because they aren't. I think the, we recently saw an issue, and, and staff have asked here for some innovative enforcement options, one of using drones. And it was interesting, because recently, they used drones to find out that somebody on ALR land was storing an abundance of RVs. Beautiful pictures of a RV lot with about 20-plus. You should have seen the comments that were made. Well, why, so what? Who cares? It's just agricultural land. Why can't you store RVs on it? And so on and so forth. Well, you're not supposed to store RVs. That's part of the enforcement piece that comes with the AL, ALC's responsibility of looking after ALR land. So, I'm just not sure exactly where we go with the options. I like the idea of hiring a person. I'm just not sure exactly which option we should go to, given, and that's where maybe a presentation might be a little more explanatory. Although I know that this motion has two parts. One is the reaffirming of the current practice, and the second is funding for a regular full-time soil bylaw officer in the 2018 budget. Maybe we could vote for number two, put it in the budget process, but have a presentation with number one, just looking at the four practices and what the difference, similarities and differences are. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. While I respect Councillor Fox's comments, because I think that they are valid in the sense that we are challenged to maintain the lands that we have, but I just, 75% of our land base is in the ALR, and it is a huge job to maintain both legal and illegal soil operations. And so, I, I think it would be prudent, and we're doing our due diligence, to try and maintain something that is an asset in our community. It does benefit the whole community, but it does have a cost. I agree that, in addition to getting another person, perhaps what we need to do is to have a staff report, and it might help to facilitate a better understanding of how we could do that more cost-effectively, how we could potentially, you know, partner with others. Let's be innovative. But certainly, I think that this is very necessary, a lot of these areas, and I'm really glad to hear that Councillor Fox has become the soil warden in his neighborhood, because I, I know it's an unpaid position, but, you know, Soil Watch, I think, has let much to commend itself in terms of, a lot of the complaints come from people who live in those neighborhoods, and it helps staff to be alert to the fact that these things are going on, when otherwise, it would be very difficult for them to know. So I do support this enforcement officer being in the 2018 budget, but also look to other budget years to make sure that we are continuing to maintaining what is our obligation in the sense of protecting our agricultural lands.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley?
Thank you. Thanks for this report. So, I just, perhaps through you, may I refer to Mr. Sufi, if I could just get a little bit of clarification? The recommendation is that council reaffirm the current practice for addressing compliance, and that council directs staff to include funding. But the very last sentence of, or the very last paragraph of the full staff report talks about the use of drones, and staff recommend a trial program to confirm this, technology for soil applications. I'm not, I'm not seeing the recommendation in something from council? Is staff looking for some support for the drone trial going forward, or I'm, I'm not understanding something there, sorry?
Your worship, perhaps I could comment. The, the challenge we have is one of using the appropriate tools for the job at hand. So the reason it's included is it's a potential tool. The tool, though, is not something that can be used to create evidence that would necessarily be admissible, because of some privacy concerns, so it really tells us more about areas where we can, in response to a complaint, where we should look. So what our practice would be, if there was actually an area that seemed to have trucks coming and going, but we couldn't identify where that was, to use it to pinpoint the area, so we could then deal with the area itself. But we've got to be very mindful of the privacy concerns in terms of using any information for, for enforcement or for public comment.
So the staff recommendation is for a trial program to test the technology of the drones, I guess? So if, if that's a recommendation from staff, sorry?
No, the, that is just a description of a potential tool that staff will evaluate. The recommendations are as per F3, to reaffirm the current practice for addressing compliance, and that council directs staff to include funding for a regular full-time soil bylaw officer in the 2016, 2018, my eyes are failing, for budget consideration.
Okay. My, I guess my confusion comes in that the staff recommendation at the very end then isn't necessarily a recommendation for endorsement?
Correct. It's simply there as an advice in terms of for the writer to be recommending or to be suggesting to staff that that is part of the process, but not for council's endorsement.
So this would be a trial program?
It's for disclosure.
Right.
Primarily for disclosure.
Okay. Thanks for that, for clearing that up.
Thank you. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure. So right now, we've got one full-time staff member and one seasonal staff member. If we approve the motion as presented tonight, which is to include funding for a regular full-time soil bylaw officer, does that mean we'll have two full-time soil officers and a seasonal, or just two full-time?
Just two.
Just two?
The short answer is it would be two. We'd be using the auxiliary funding to go from, say, one and a half to a total of two. We wouldn't have two and a half, it would be two.
Okay. And I, the same question that some of the other councillors have raised, which in regards to these options, will this be coming back to a council priorities committee meeting or another council meeting? Because it would seem to me that we should probably talk about these options in more detail.
So, your worship, the process could come back to council for as further discussion or direction as council sees fit. At this point, the resolution is really aimed at confirming what we're doing. And secondly, just to, to let us know what we should be doing in terms of the budget priorities, in terms of whether we should include that, that part would come back to council in the context of the budget itself. If there is to be further discussion on the soil deposit permit program, and whatever that may look like, then that would be something that could be added on.
Yeah, but it's, it's not really 100% clear to me, anyway, how much additional staff each option requires. And that's why probably, if we talked about the options in the context of the options and the additional staffing, it might help make a choice a little clearer. So I'd like to move an amendment to the motion, that we ask staff to bring a presentation back to council on the soil enforcement options presented in the report, as well as the budget impacts of each of those options.
Thank you. Mr. Becken, could that be done during the budget process?
It could be, your worship. A couple of steps go here, though. The question really is then, in terms of the timing, in terms of whether that's to be done prior to the budget process or concurrent, that's a part of it. The second part is whether we want to continue addressing or reaffirm our present process just so we have that comfort, because I think what we're talking about is step one, reaffirm what we're doing, but number two, then look at what we want to do going forward, which is part of the reference, the reference in terms of, should there be additional funding? What options should we be looking at? Maybe there shouldn't be. Mr. Sufi, do you want to comment on part two, then, how long it would take to try to put that together?
The presentation?
Correct.
It could be done fairly quickly, as early as, I guess, the first or second month in, in the new year.
Okay, so that's still in time for the budget process, but we could, then it would be, because I...
Your worship, point of information, is this is in addition to?
It's in, it's in addition to, so it's just asking that staff report back with...
No, make a presentation on these options and the budget implications of them.
That's right. So it would be helpful as part of the budget process, so...
I could be mistaken, but I interpreted it to be basically a deferral or referral of part two for that purpose, so part two would not be adopted, it would be floating, if you will, until that presentation and the commentary came about.
As long as it's, we do need to approve this at some point during the budget process, so it has to be, so if early January still is, assists us in making the appropriate decisions for the budget, then that would be, that would be excellent. Okay, so a seconder to that amendment. Councillor Arneson, discussion on the amendment. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I mean, this particular motion here is just asking that it gets brought to the budgeting process, so I, I don't know if, I mean, I think it's important for us to decide today, should it go forward to the budgeting process, and I think the decision is that it should. It should go forward to the budgeting process, and a part of that process will be to have a presentation to us about the need for this and why we need to approve it in the budgeting process.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Yeah, I think we're getting a bit mixed up here. In my opinion, there's two parts to the motion that was in the report, and I could see and support a third part, which is that staff would come back in the new year with a presentation on how they're proceeding on the options. If we defer this, that means it's coming out of the 2018 budget, and we're not going to have the bylaw enforcement officers that we, staff say they, they need. So, it'd be handy to hear read back what we're going to vote on, but I don't think I agree with deferring part two, which is what I think the motion is doing.
Ms. Bauer, can you just read back the amendment?
Well, excuse, it...
The, Ms. Bauer.
Let's hear, let's hear what it is, then, maybe I've got it wrong.
That staff proceed, that, pardon me, that staff provide a presentation on the soil enforcement options, as well as the budget impacts of these options.
That's instead of the two that are here now?
No, it's, excuse me, excuse me, it is in addition to, so the motion would be as it is there, with the addition to what was just read as an amendment.
So it's, so if there were bullet points, it'd be a third bullet point?
That's right, exactly.
So in other words, we are approving the soil officer to come back for consideration, as was mentioned?
That's right, along with the presentation. That's the way I understand it.
Okay, if we understand that, then that's great.
Okay.
So it's part three, so it's an addition.
That's right. Councillor Fox?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to feel more comfortable with the division, so that bullet point number two there, could actually, we could vote on that and put that into the budget circulation, and then reaffirming the current practice be based on a presentation.
So, we would need first to vote on the amendment, and then we could have division, is that correct, Ms. Bauer?
I, I, I just don't want to...
Because we're on amendment right now, so we would need to vote on the amendment, and then the amendment would become part of the motion as amended, and then you could call for division, I believe. Okay, so we'll, we'll stick with the amendment right now. Councillor Davis?
No, I just, I was getting a little confused, because it's, so I'm thinking that we don't want to take bullets and two, so to speak, out. I'm just cautious of that. So, if we, the amendment would put all three of them in, and it would come back before we made decisions on what went in the budget.
Before final decision on the budget.
Before, yeah, okay.
Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I just want to read, to say that my intent of the amendment was not to get rid of either one or two, but to add to it by saying, let's have a fuller discussion around it. Right now, the current practice for addressing compliance is what's in place. Do we need to move towards something different from what's now? And we haven't had that discussion, and I think we need to have that discussion. So I don't see them as competing with each other in any way, they're actually complementary to each other.
Thank you. Okay, I will, I see no further discussion on the amendment, just push a button there. Councillor Long?
So, just to, just so I'm clear here, can we label them A, B, and C? And this is C that we're voting on now, to add C?
Yes, so, we could do that, so, I mean, that's easy.
Because these actually are quite different, these two, they should have been A and B already, I think.
But they are, there's a, there are three parts. So, and that council directs staff to include funding for regular full-time soil bylaw officer in the 2018 budget for consideration, and then it's this portion. I'm going to call a question on this, I think.
Before you call the question, if you could just reread C?
Could you reread C, then? And it's F3, okay.
That an additional recommendation be added, that asks staff to provide a presentation on the soil enforcement options, as well as the budget impacts of these options?
So that's what we're voting on right now, just that one piece. So I've called a question. It carries unanimously, so now we're back to the main motion as amended. Councillor Fox, did you wish to divide? Okay, so, Councillor Long, had you on the speaker's list for the main motion?
Fine, now, yeah, so we're voting on A, B, and C.
A, B, and C, yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
I'm going to call a question. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Move on to F4, and this is the DCC front-ending agreement, Qualico Developments Vancouver Incorporated. Have a motion, please? Councillor Fox, seconder. Councillor Qualley. Discussion on F4. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, just a question through you two staff. If we go forward with this, are the fees set for the, for future DCC works, or will the fees come in on a sliding or an escalating scale?
Mr. Becken, who's best to answer that? Mr. Sufi?
Your worship, if I could ask for clarification, what fees is Councillor Richter referring to?
Okay, so we're saying, we're going to allow Qualico to go ahead and build this at their cost, and then when other developers want to come in, they have to pay Qualico. Is there going to be any opportunity for Qualico to be profit-oriented in the sense of charging more?
Your worship, that is not going to be the case. These fees are actually DCCs that are payable to the township, and what this agreement allows us to do is to collect those fees from third parties and then transfer them over to Qualico, based on what we, the township determines are the appropriate development cost charge rates.
Okay, and will there be a cap on the total amount that will go to Qualico?
That's correct. It will not exceed the actual cost of the, the works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Yeah, I might be, there isn't really a mention of an address of where this development is, but I guess it doesn't really matter, we're voting on the principle. But the question I have is, is when there are developments, so here we're talking about front-ending, because you have to get the services in, what about things like sidewalks? So if, if there's a development here, and then, and the land next to the guys holding, the people are holding out, and then there's another development, and there's a holdout, so now you've got, you know, two or three developments on a street, and there's these gaps in between. Can we get that front-ended as well? To, to put temporary sidewalks or something like that?
It would be a challenge, because quite often, in your example, the two properties that were holding out would want to be compensated for the land value. In fact, they'd be happy to be compensated if the land value went to have the, the other party actually pay for the improvements, because when then they decided to develop, they would have a free ride on those things, they'd have the benefit of selling the land.
What do you mean, land value? You mean the space of the sidewalk, for example?
Correct. Usually, you're going to see...
Is that on the right-of-way already? No?
Often, it's not. In fact, they're required to dedicate it as part of the, the development that they're doing, so the same problem we face in certain corridors, why don't we build the road out or put the sidewalks in? We have to physically acquire the road and compensate for it, and then put the construction in, whereas what we would typically do is say, when you come forward with the development, you actually submit the land to us for free, and then build, build the infrastructure itself.
Well, I think we need to have some more discussion about, about that, but thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Yeah, thank you. Maybe through you to Mr. Sufi, can you just point out where it would be on this particular map? That's 82nd, that's 208th. Aveth goes through there. Where are we looking at the location of this?
So the pond, your worship, is that kidney-shaped darker, darker area to the north, just south of 82nd Avenue.
So, that becomes important for a lot of reasons, in terms of, of the area, because actually, this is the first thing that needs to go in. No developer, no development, no schools, no anything can go in until this is actually put in place. So, you know, the, the importance of this document becomes, I think, paramount in terms of trying to move not only the development piece, but the schools, the parks, everything else. This, my questions, two questions. Qualico will return cost and carrying charges, or just cost?
Your worship, there are, there are carrying charges incorporated in the overall cost-recovery mechanism, as permitted in the provincial legislation.
Thank you. And the second thing I, question I have is, this is very, I, I think this is adjacent to our park, Yorxan Park, is it not? Do we not own the property down to 80th in long-term development of this as a park?
Indeed, your worship, this is actually within the park. It is, it is something that is a very innovative stormwater management system in terms of underground detention, as opposed to on surface. So it's within the park system that this will be incorporated.
So in fact, on top of this, we may see some form of recreation opportunities for this community as well, right? There's a similar park, or similar situation like this, just east of Aldagrove, it's in Abbotsford, it's just north of the Fraser Highway, they've never developed it actually as anything on top of the detention pond operation, but it's a huge vast tank. So we would actually, could actually see this develop into a recreational benefit over the long term, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I think that I, my opinion is, this is... So, I think that I, my opinion is, this is very innovative. This is not an outdoor swimming pool, this is actually a covered detention tank, and it will be massive to obviously accommodate this, but it will allow the school board to look at school sites, it will allow other opportunities just beyond just a holding tank. And I think that's, that's great. I think that if we can see baseball fields, or tennis courts, or other hardcore, hard surfaces on top of this, I think that that's what happens in Vancouver when land is scarce and recreation opportunities are desired, so.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on F4? Seeing none, I'll call a question on F4. Carries unanimously. Move on to correspondence, this is one piece of correspondence, access to waterways. Counselor Long moves it, secondaire. Counselor Sparrow, any questions, discussion on receipt? Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'm wondering if, if it would be difficult or challenging just to come up with a little bit of an inventory to come back to council with respect to what kind of infrastructure we currently have and its state of repair, just further to this inquiry. I, I know that we have, well, I've actually seen correspondence, I'm sure all of council has, sometimes regarding the state of repair of our access in Fort Langley. So, I just don't, I'm not really personally aware of the state of how many of our, I guess, places to put in in Fraser River?
Boat launches.
Boat launches, thank you, Counselor Fox. And, and maybe potentially the cost implications, you know, for this, if we were considering other options to improve what we currently have.
Mr. Backen, can that be a memo to council by direction? And just, as I think it would be one, a public one, there's some private ones that access the Fraser River, and I don't think we're accessing any other bodies of water, so.
We can do a memo, your worship.
Great, thank you. Take this direction. Okay, I'm going to call a question on G1. Receipt, yeah. Carried unanimously. Minutes of committees, we've got the heritage advisory committee, recreation culture parks, I think those two, motion to receive. Counselor Long, second, Counselor Qualley, discussion on that. Seeing none, I'll call a question on H1. Carries unanimously. And is there any other business? Seeing none, motion terminated. Counselor Davis, second by. Counselor Whitmarsh, all those in favor? Show of hands, opposed, carried. Thank you.